And good morning to you. I'm Mike Stevens in the WBCU newsroom this morning. And once again, we're in here with candidates for county council. We had the House District 42 Republican candidates on yesterday. This morning, we have the District 2 County Council candidates on the Democratic side. So matter of fact, the rest of the week will be filled with Democrats. But we had the one Republican yesterday. And matter of fact, in this particular race, whoever wins this primary will be pretty well assured of taking the seat because you don't have any Republican opposition in November. So get by the 14th, and I wouldn't be surprised if there were a runoff in that election, two weeks after the primary. And we'll just have to see. Let me introduce the folks that are with us this morning. I'm going from my left to my right. And as it turns out, I'll be introducing the incumbent here, Ralph Tucker, who has served on the county council for several years now. Ralph was elected just after the current supervisor resigned the District 2 seat to run for that office. And of course, we all know he was elected. Also, we have with us this morning, Mr. James Rice. And we've been talking about our old stomping ground. Of course, you still stomp there. And then our friend John Glenn from down in the Carlisle area. John's had a little political experience in that he's served on the Carlisle Town Council.
That's correct.
Good group of people down there. So we just want to talk a little bit this morning and see where you are and what's going on with you. And see where we're headed in this election coming up here. I'm going to start with John mainly because that would be alphabetical order to go that way. And we try, we try to split it up fairly, but sometimes I forget where I am. Ralph, I'm going to ask you to slide up just a little bit there to get a little closer to the microphone. But John, what's your motivation for running for this office?
My motivation for running for this office is the same motivation why come I've been a volunteer for twenty-seven years. I just love helping people. And it's all about the people for me and getting out, meeting people and helping them and then doing whatever I can for the people.
You got a nice fire department down there.
Yes, sir. I do. And you know, it's a blessing from God that we have that station from what we had before we got that station.
Yeah, I know. This is uptown. I was down there for the dedication.
Yeah.
And this is modern of a facility as you'd like to see.
Yep. Very nice.
I always like it when that siren goes off, though.
Yeah, it sounds nice, but you like to hear the sound, but you don't like what comes after the sound.
Well, we like the fact that you're there to respond is what I'm looking at. So James Rice is with us this morning.
Yes, sir.
From the Cross Keys area. And as I say, that's where my roots are. Why you want to run, John?
Well, I haven't had experiences first on the council, but I had thirty-four and a half years of experience with the federal government. And I think some of that experience I can use here to help Union County.
All right. What did you do in the federal government?
Well, some that I can talk about and some that I can't.
Okay, you'd have to kill me.
No, we don't want to go to jail. We don't want to go to jail.
No, I don't.
But I work with the Department of Housing. And I dealt with a lot of relocating people when disaster would happen.
Oh, okay.
You know, that type of thing.
That's admirable work. So Ralph, back with us again. You're running for your first full term.
Yeah.
As I say, you were elected when Councilman Hart stepped down to become supervisor. Two years been pretty good to you? You feel like you can do more than's been done so far?
Yeah, I think I can do more. I mean, I learned a lot. You know, just being on council and going to seminars in Columbia and had representatives there from all of the counties all over South Carolina. And you learn a lot just by going to the seminars and you know, you be down there for two or three days.
Yeah, sure you do.
And you just learn a lot of how government works, you know. And the only thing I try to do is just try to help the people and try to make the best decision for the people of Union County. Because it ain't about me. And I just try to help them if I can. What if I do, I try to make the right decision. And when I make the decision, I can go home and sleep at night knowing that I did made the right decision.
Well, being able to put your head on the pillow and sleep soundly is a good thing. I'm going to ask you, and I'm going to reverse the order this time. Let's start with Ralph. Mr. Tucker, I guess I should call all of you mister, but please understand you do have my respect. Issues facing council. To you, Ralph, what would be the number one issue that this council faces?
The number one issue now facing council is trying to balance the budget right now because we got to balance it by June the 30th. And we got a budget meeting coming up Wednesday.
Tomorrow, yeah.
Yeah. And so, I mean, we just got to try to, you know, find out what we can do to balance the budget because it ain't easy. I mean, we done, it's a lot of things that people don't really know about now that we gonna have to spend a lot of money that we don't have. So, but we gonna try to do our best that we can do.
Well, James, what do you think would be the number one issue facing the county?
I think, in my opinion, is the number one issue is to do more for the young peoples of Union County and do excellent more for the senior citizen.
At my age, I don't like that.
Well, so do I. But we don't have, let me back up a little bit.
Okay.
Now, council on aging in Newberry, I remember you in Newberry for an example, council on aging in Newberry take care of their senior citizen. They take them to doctor, take them to, they got, they got bus, buses that are sponsored by the state. And they have bus trips to take people back and forth from Newberry to Columbia every day to work. They take them to doctor, take them to people that had to go to dialysis, bus, take them to dialysis and wait for them. So we need something like that here in Union because Union only have one taxi cab. One.
The first and the last. Alpha, omega.
That's right. That's what the name of it is, right.
Yes, that's right. John, what do you think? What would be the number one issue for you?
Well, I agree with both of the guys, you know, mostly with Ralph, budget is an issue because we can't spend what we don't have. And you know, and Mr. Rice said, we do need to take care of our youth and our seniors. But I think the main issue for council to me is the population. I mean, the population is why we have a budget problem because there's hardly nobody here in Union. And until we can get some higher paying jobs and something for our youth to do to keep them here in Union and to get the people that goes outside of Union to work and to get some higher paying jobs to get people to move in the Union, we wouldn't have all these budget problems because the fewer people that's here in Union County is just too much on them to keep adding on taxes to pay for the service we get. So until we can do about something about the population or do something to get people to move here in Union or work here in Union, then we can start spreading it out a little bit. And that should give the people of Union some type of relief. And some of these problems should eventually go away.
We can only hope.
We can only hope.
Yeah. I want to go back just a minute to what Ralph said about this, which directly related directly to what you were talking about, Mr. Rice. You're talking about the budget. And balancing a budget is no easy task. And what basically happens here is you take the anticipated, now it's not in the bank yet, but the anticipated revenue that'll be coming in and try to balance that against what you want to spend.
Right.
As we know, last year, that many of the, what is called outside agencies took a pretty big hit.
It did.
And, but what do you do about it? Well, I'm sure, do I hear something?
Like a truck?
Oh, okay. Sound like a wolf howling. The council on aging in Union was completely eliminated from the budget last year. They were starting with zero. Now, what saved them was the fact that they had a building. Was that building in Lockhart?
Lockhart, they sold it.
They sold it and managed to take that money to operate off of this year. Mr. Black has appeared before the county council twice now to appeal to them to reinstate at least some of the money so they can operate. And you were talking about buses. At last report, they have two, but both of them were non-operable.
I was told that.
That's not a good situation.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
So let's, I'm going to ask this of all of you, but how does Newberry operate that efficiently and successfully in Union County?
They get support from the state.
Why do they get it and we don't?
That's a good question. That's a good question. That's the one I'd like to know.
One of the questions, I mean, you know, we've met with some people from Orangeburg twice about trying to get a transit system here in Union.
Right.
And so we got another meeting coming up. And they said what they're trying to do is get people, they could take them to work, they can take them to Walmart, they can take them to doctor appointments or whatever, you know, but that's what they're trying to do. And they said they get their money from the state. And we had some people there from Rock Hill, too. And they said they get grant money for them, too. But we ain't got it off the ground yet, but we trying to get it off the ground here in Union.
There is a transportation committee that's exploring this.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it is. That's it.
And so is that, if they get it, that's probably where Newberry is coming from. We have a transportation system, is that right?
Exactly.
John, you're shaking your head there.
Yes, because we have the same transportation meeting with the transportation people that Mr. Tucker is talking about in Carlisle. And what they, what they do, they come in and they assess the county and they send people surveys out in the mail to see what type of transportation would you be interested in. And they also let people fill out surveys at the meeting to see what you would interested in. And I was told, once they go around to all the areas in the county, then they would go back to the transportation committee and give them the results of their findings. And they would make recommendations on what type of transportation they thought would help Union County. And you know, they spoke of, you know, say for instance, Chester, they don't have the large transportation buses, but they have the small Dodge Caravan type transportation bus. And they're more gas efficient than the big ones. And they have a lot of those. So, you know, just speaking off the top of their head, they thought that might be something that would work for Union. You know, something start off small and then grows into something a whole lot bigger.
I've seen a Chester bus over here.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I would like to say, too, that Newberry has it, Spartanburg has it, and Greenwood have it. I mean, they have a large fleet. Now, I think it's something that you only need to look into real serious. I really do.
Yeah. And the case of all three of those counties you just mentioned, we're talking about significantly greater population.
I agree. I agree.
And which would also say the need may be greater.
Somewhat, somewhat.
Somewhat there. But we're finding here that there's a lot of senior citizens here that could benefit from transportation.
Thank you.
Are you on that committee, Ralph?
Yeah.
I was thinking, where's the committee right now?
What now?
Where are you right now in the study or whatever you may be doing right now?
You talking about for the seniors?
For the transportation, possibilities of a transportation system in Union.
Well, they supposed to get back with us, that's like John said, when they go through all of the districts in the county. And they're asking for the people what they need. And they gonna try to get back with all the committee and have another meeting. Because when we had the first meeting, we had two groups. And they made us take a vote, you know, and then the girl from Rock Hill, she tallied them up and it was one vote different for one company than the other company. And so she told me, said, well, you double check it because I said I might have made a mistake. And so I double checked it and it was right. And so it is one vote different, you know, because both of them presented, you know, about the same thing. But we went with the group out of Orangeburg.
Right.
Yeah. But they said they want to educate the people and go out in the areas, you know, where they think people need service at. And they want to, you know, trying to get the people on board and that, you know, letting them know that what they are do for them. And they said, if you call, and they said, if you call within 24 hours and let them know, so they'll pick you up and take you wherever you need to go. Like if you want to go to Walmart, you want to go to doctor, you want to go to grocery store, that's whatever you need. If you need to go to dialysis, they'll take you there, too.
Right. I think there's an ambulance service that actually does that and as far as dialysis.
Right, it does sometimes.
How, I'm going to ask you, since you're a little closer to it, how far away is this from happening?
I think it'll happen this year. I mean, I don't know exactly when, but I think it 'll happen in 2016.
Would that be an answer to the problems, Mr. Rice?
Well, it all depends on, Mr. Stevens. If, I know they can't start, you know, at the top, at the top, with a whole big fleet. But at least give the people something. Give the people something. I would be willing to set up a meeting with the council supervisor and go to Newberry and talk to the administrators down there.
Well, they must be doing something.
And another thing, too, when they take these people to the doctor or to on the shopping trip and stuff, they don't, they don't go for free. They pay a small fee.
Yeah, they do.
A very small fee. So now, I don't know all the details of this event, but I do know it works.
You live in an area, John, that seems to me would be able to benefit greatly from a transportation service.
Yes, that is true. I mean, living in Carlisle is pretty good ride from Carlisle to Union. And there is a lot of seniors in Carlisle that don't have transportation. Just luckily, we have some good peoples in Carlisle with cars that don't mind giving our seniors a ride to where they need to go.
And that's a good thing. That is a good thing, that you have a good neighborhood down there, neighbors that are willing to pitch in and help.
You can see a car leaving out of Carlisle every morning. It might be three or four different peoples in there. And somebody was taking them where they need to go, whether it's to the Walmart, to CVS to get their medication, or taking them off to a doctor. I mean, we have some good people in Carlisle that willing to help out.
Those people deserve a pat on the back.
Yes, they do. Yes, they do.
I want to go back here and, because this ties in so closely, I'm concerned about the council on aging.
I am, too.
I am, too.
Where are we going to get money to fund an agency like that?
That's a good question, buddy.
Well, Mr. Stevens, I'm going to tell you like this. A lot of it can come from the state. The majority of it can come from the state.
But why doesn't it?
That's another question, a good question. Now, I don't know the procedures. I don't know how you go about applying for this. I don't know. But I know it's happening.
So thus the reason you say it'd be a good idea to visit Newberry?
Yes, sir.
To see what we could come up with.
Yes, sir.
All right. Ralph, you're on the council. What do you think?
Well, I think one of the things going to help is we get the 1% sales tax passed, but you got to educate the people that it's going to generate a whole lot of money for Union County because everybody will pay that penny. And I told Frank, because you know that he got the user fees and the public sector fees. And I said, people ain't going to vote for it if you leave the fees on. You got to eliminate those fees one way or the other because all that doing is adding another tax on top of two tax you already got.
Let's talk about that. Please correct me if I get off base on this.
Go ahead.
The 1% sales tax, at least 70% of that which is collected has to go to property tax related.
Right.
Okay. Which means your tax bill would be going down.
True.
What you would save, okay, this gets a little confusing. What you would save on your tax bill could then go to replace these fees.
Right.
Okay, I'm all right on that. So it's sort of like a balancing out kind of thing. It's just a different way of getting the money.
Yeah.
So, well, let's just hold right here between the other two gentlemen here, Mr. Rice, Mr. Glenn. I'm going to start with Mr. Glenn. What do you think about the 1% sales tax increase?
Well, I was all for 1% tax fee. And I think I still am. And as I've been campaigning, going door to door, and I had a gentleman, he talked, me and him had a discussion into the 1% sale tax. And he almost convinced me that the 1% sale tax would hurt the small man. So I'm kind of up in the air on the 1% sale tax. I still likes it. I love the 1% sale tax, being that, you know, we have a lot of people in Union County that not property owners. And a lot of them don't even own a vehicle. So therefore, they don't pay any tax at all.
Right.
So, you know, and, you know, my thinking is that even though those peoples don't pay any property tax or vehicle tax, they do buy goods from the stores here in Union. And we have people passing through Union that stops and buy gas and sodas and snacks and stuff that will have to pay that 1% sale tax to help give us some relief here in the county. So I think the 1% sale tax is a good idea. But every day when I knock on people's doors and talk to people, introduce myself and tell them who I am, you know, I get different opinions about it. So I have to sit down and rethink, is it, is it not a real good idea?
Mr. Rice, your thoughts?
Yes, sir. Well, I was under impression, it's not a 1%. It's a 1 cent. If I'm wrong, correct me.
You're right. It is a 1 cent.
It's a 1 cent.
That's the way I understood. That's the way I understood.
Right. Well, if it's 1 cent on the dollar, it's still 1%.
Yeah. But I think it's a good idea, provided if it's used properly, like it's supposed to be. But even in the federal government, they used, there was times when we asked for one thing and when we received it, we did something else with the money. You know, and that's, to me, that's not a good thing toward the people. Now, I was talking supervisor Hart not too long ago, when they was in the process of buying the old Chrysler building. When they came up, they didn't have the money to buy it.
But we didn't finalize it, then?
But the money came from somewhere.
You're coming, Ralph. You hadn't finalized it.
Yeah, we didn't finalize it.
You didn't finalize it.
Yeah.
Where did the money come from?
Well, I mean, they had to pull some of it out of the general fund that they had, but, you know, but we didn't paid it all in his hours. It belonged to Union County.
You wanted to add something?
Yeah, yeah. I'm wondering, just me thinking, could that money have been used for something else that was more needed than that building? You know, there was a proposal that it was presented to the council, that there was, they wanted to spend 1.7 million, I think, to remall the building. And the building did not belong to this county. But I'm glad they said no to that.
We had to say no.
Had to say no.
We didn't own it, though. We didn't have, we didn't have the money.
Yeah. But, but when it came up, when it came up to purchase it, money came from somebody. So if we can, if we can find money for things like that, we can find money for other things, too, that are most needed.
All right. I want to talk to you not as a radio host or even a newsman. I want to ask you a question as a citizen. My impression of that particular building was that it was in horrible shape. Is that a wise purchase? Is that a wise use of taxpayer money, John? If I'm right on that.
Well, I don't know all the details, but I do know the maintenance department had to have somewhere to go. You know, if that was the only charge we had, then we had to have it. So was it wasteful? I don't think so. Because it was a need. In my understanding, the Union County has a large fleet of vehicles and tractors and stuff that they have to take care to provide citizen service every day. So I don't, I've seen a lot of buildings in Union. And to me, that's about the only building big enough to do service on the type of vehicles that the county have. So, no, I don't think it was wasteful spending. It was just something the county need and we had to have it.
You know I'm going to call on you, Ralph.
Okay.
How do you respond to that? Y'all talked about spending money on that building.
Right. But see, Robert Small owned the building.
Right.
And they leased it from him, I think, for 11 years. And the rent was like $4,000 a month. And when I first got on council and found out that what they was paying, and then I told them, I said, you do the math, and you go for 11 years and you pay $4,000 a month. And you done paid for that building three or four times over where you could have purchased the building. And so some of the council members didn't want to buy. And I said, well, you just throwing away money. Because, you know, if you own it, that cut the lease out. Because you do the math, you spent $4,000 a month for 11 years.
Are we talking about the Chrysler building or the?
No, no, we talking about the EMS building. That's the building we bought.
That's what I'm confused about. Are we talking about the Chrysler building or the EMS building?
The EMS building. See, the EMS building, we had to buy it because the hospital, Spartanburg Regional didn't want the ambulance service. And so that's when we had to go back and get money, you know, to take it over because Spartanburg Regional didn't want it. And so we had Brad Jarrett to do assessment on it because he the building inspector for Union. And so then we had Robert to put a new roof on it because it says it had some leaks in there. But he put a new roof on it. And they said ambulance can't be housed outside because some of the medication be in there, that you got to have it enclosed. And it's got to be in air condition. And so that's why we had to make the decision to do that. Now, it'd have been great if Spartanburg Regional had took it over, but they didn't.
Yeah, that's sort of been a thorn in the side there.
For a while, yeah, it has.
Now, do we own the Chrysler building?
Yeah, they bought it way back before I got on council. Thomas Inclay was supervisor.
Yes, when that was purchased. But there's still, that particular building is not fully utilized?
No, they just got the voter registration and then they got a mechanic shop down there and something else in there. But that building need a lot of work. It needs a lot of work.
And really, that's what I was referring to there.
Yeah.
Is it worth spending the money on the building? Is it salvageable?
You might could. But I mean, you'd have had to put a lot of money in there. They said even if you put a roof on it, you looking at over a million dollars to put a roof on that building.
We spending a lot of money here, Mr. Rice.
Exactly, exactly. But the money's spending just beginning. I understand the building is not on a public sewer. And it's not on city water.
Really?
Nope. So the building's on separate thing.
Wow.
So how long, how long are we going to be able to get away with that? It's something to think about.
Yeah. You'd think so. You really would. Let's move on here a little bit. We talked about several things here. And just exactly how we're going to solve the council on aging problem is still up in the air.
Yeah.
But certainly, that will, that may come up tomorrow afternoon.
It probably will.
Probably will. I know Mr. Black has been there.
Yeah, he'll probably be there.
And this is not the same Mr. Black that has run it for many years.
No, that's Tim.
Tim.
Yeah, because he said Earl going to retire October the 15th.
So they're getting him.
He going to take it over.
He gonna take it over, because he told me, when I go down there to the meetings, he said, "I've been down there more than any councilman, been on the senior citizen and any of them, cause I visit a lot, just go down there and meet up with the seniors and talk to him about different things and just trying to help them, that's all I try to do."
Yeah, but there's no will to draw from.
No, not right now, ain't.
Hmm, that's sad. That's not good. Not good at all, all right.
But one of the things in Union, you know, that we ain't got the tax base like a lot of these other counties got. And you, like John was saying, they, we ain't got the high paying jobs, like they pay in Newbury and they play in Spaldingburg, Greensburg, Fountain Inn, all them places. And because when the textile mills left here, I mean, that really took a toll on Union, because see, anytime you got a plant, you getting revenue off of that plant, tax base. And when all these bills closed, that really hurt Union, it really did. And we didn't get a, we got a few industries back, but it wasn't nothing like what we had.
The tax base, no doubt, has been eroding.
Right.
Uh, and John, you, you touched on this yourself at the beginning of the show. Uh, and, and the supervisor has mentioned a number of times the need to rebuild our base.
Right.
If I can use that particular terminology, how are we gonna do that, John?
It's gonna take teamwork, I mean, there's no one man or one woman who's gonna be able to do it by theyself. So it's gonna take a group of hardworking people, council with the supervisor, not no separate council from the supervisor, it's gonna take the whole council and the supervisor together to get it going in the right direction. Now, it ain't gonna happen overnight, I don't know if it'll have them in the rest of our lifetime, but eventually, we gonna have to do some, somebody gonna have to make the tough decision. I understand that, you know, when they go after these companies to give them to move in the county, they give them a tax break. I mean, I'm almost willing to give them a free tax break, just to get them here, to get the people to working, to get some income coming in the Union, to get some people moving in the Union and to get the people here in Union a higher paying job so they can live the American dream. It's hard to live the American dream off a $10 an hour job, you can't. I mean, where I live at, I can't live off the $10 an hour job, so a lot of people here in Union feel the same way I do. You just can't do it off a $10 an hour job, so we have to go after these companies. And I don't know what it takes to get them here, cause I have not been involved in that. But even if we have to give them, uh, a zero tax break, come here for free for so many years and get the people here and working and get somebody to move here in Union. And maybe when our kids go off to college and they get out of college, they will want to come back to Union to live and start a family and right now, they don't, they don't, because there's nowhere for them to work and to put that degree they on to good use.
Lot of people not making $10 an hour.
That's right.
Right, no. I mean, I mean, you can't live the American dream off the $10 an hour job and, like you say, a lot of them is not making it $10 an hour, but you gonna need, need a whole lot more than the $10 an hour job, because once you get that $4 an hour paycheck, you go pay some bills, you buy a little bit of grocery and God knows if you had to visit the doctor, uh, buy some medication, you don't have enough left for house payment. So.
I don't know if anybody could live on $10 or less.
No.
An hour. You wanted to add something to that, Mr. Rice?
Yeah, just a little bit, uh, having industry to move, move in, in the Union, moving in the, in the place to give them a tax, tax break, but you know, the majority of them, when you give them a tax break, when that break is up, they leave.
We've had some bad experiences along the way. And I expect one of the biggest disappointments was the Disney distribution center. Uh, we, as I recall, we just about gave them the farm and when the time was up, they said goodbye. And you, I don't, I shouldn't be expressing my opinion. You know, I've had some little resentment toward Disney since that time.
I can understand.
God, they were good for Union as long, first we got Belks up there and they're doing great, I think, and we wanna keep them happy and we want them to do well as well, although we've lost the Belk store itself. Now, that was a blow to our community, the, the, the Belk store and nothing has come in to replace that. And the reason Belks left, that the business wasn't here, the people weren't here, John.
Yeah.
To, and I think a lot of businesses would find that to be the case, it's the market.
Right.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, uh, Ralph, you wanna say, add anything to that?
Well, one of the things I think gonna help Union, you know, if we get the 1 cent sales tax passed, you know, they have a lot of events out there, Temkin Sports Complex and so a lot of those.
Let's compliment them, they've been a.
They have. And they, I mean, they have, you know, they have tournaments out there, the state girl softball, when it was going for the championship. And there was so many people out there that you couldn't park from the old bylaws all the way across the street with overflow parking.
That's great.
And so a lot of those people's from out of town and they spending money out there, cause you had to pay to get in, you had to pay to buy your food in there, drinks, whatever. And, uh, just, we just need to keep Temkin going, because they really, they generating money for Union, they really did.
They really do.
They really do.
And as I say, wonderful folks, have been great contributors in Union County.
Yeah, they have.
And, uh, we appreciate it, folks.
Yeah, you're right.
I wanna talk to you about these events just for a moment, you mentioned the girls softball and congratulations to them. You, you lost the final game, that championship game, but that doesn't take anything away from our pride that we have in you.
You're right.
Great girls there, of course, they won it last year.
They won the last two years, they're going for a three pick.
All right, so, uh, but that's good and it generated, uh, it generated business for the folks in Union in a number of ways, not only at the gate.
Right.
But, uh, other places around here, uh, the restaurants.
The restaurant, the hotels.
Hotels and all. Now, let's go to another event, uh, y'all contributed pretty heavily to the coon hunters, didn't you?
Yeah.
Was it worth it?
Yeah, they made a profit, they brought the numbers to us in the last council meeting, they made a profit. And they said, "The people come here from all over the United States, pretty much."
What'd you think about it, Mr. Rice, the coon hunters and these events help us?
Yes, I, I really do, I think it's a big help, uh, we just need more of it.
You're right.
We need more, more, uh, things like that happening, but, uh, I don't know, I really, I don't know what we need to do to, uh, build this, this, uh, can't tell up. Uh, but we, we got to do something, Mr. Steve, we got to do something, if not, Union, Union gonna die. It was, it has dead, look at, look at Main Street.
Yeah, you don't have to look very far, do you?
There was sure, you really don't, so many stores are closed and, uh, people talking about going, going to the mall. Uh, we get, get away from downtown and go to the mall, where's the mall, Walmart? I mean, I'm not here, I'm not criticizing Union, cause I live here.
Yeah.
You know, although I was away from here for 45 years, but, uh, I didn't, I didn't come back here to sit down, I came back here to work, uh, and I'm not tired of working yet, I was, I got a little age on me, but, you know, I'm ready to work.
Yeah, I think you and I have something to relate to here.
Cause I know they sent me a letter from the Historic Society, I got it Saturday, I think, I got it Friday or Saturday. And it started about the history of Union, if you read it, back in 1959, Main Street had so many stores to use that you couldn't keep up with all of them. And a lot of them, you know, they had the bottom floor for something and then the up floor, they had another, just like all the state bank, they had upper floor up there and they had it for the, uh, council on aging upstairs in the bank. They had all kind of furniture stores, clothing stores, shoe stores, you name it, doctor's office. And you could go right down to the Historic Society and figure out one of them brochures and it said from 1959. And then it goes on back, High Collars got his name, Crosskey's got his name, Kelton, P. Ridge, all that history is in there. But it, it, it's, Main Street is full.
Yeah, it was, I remember.
I mean, I was a little kid, cause I was born in 54, but still.
Probably had a lot of jobs in Union then.
They did, I mean, all them plants there.
We don't have the jobs no more.
That's what I'm saying.
There's no need for all them stores and until we can get the jobs back in Union, we can get the stores back, but no jobs, no people, no stores. All these retailers is about population and numbers, we don't have the numbers in Union.
And if you look at a lot of the businesses here on Main Street, uh, I say a lot, but at least some are housing government operations.
Yes.
And that doesn't contribute anything to the economy.
No. I mean, I understand what Ralph's saying, because I remember the days of Main Street, my granddaddy had that big Cadillac and I had two sisters and we used to almost sleep in our shoes on a Saturday morning to see who can beat each other outside to that car so we can get the Union.
You could stir people with the stick on Main Street.
And you could walk up and down the street, it was, we came up here, we didn't even buy anything, we just liked coming up and walking up and down Main Street to see all the people, almost like a county fair. That was the old days, I mean, and like I said, we, we have to do something about the population and the only way we can do something about the population, we got to do something about the quality of life and that mean get some good paying jobs here in Union. Now, we do have jobs.
Yeah, we do.
Like you say, $10 or less, a minimum wage, hard to make a good living off that. We need something that you can really make a living off and somebody might wants to move to Union to get a job and eventually buy a house here in Union, that is how we gonna up our population.
Population is the key, business is the key.
Yes.
To attract the people in here. I understand, uh, it seems to me that the housing market should be pretty good here, although I have heard people say it's not. But, uh, with some of the closings with these plans, I think some of these mid and, uh, upper level management people who've left Union.
But the only way you can get them in, I mean, get an industry in to come in, you gotta give them a fee in lieu of taxes, because if you don't do it, they're just pull up and go somewhere else, that's basically what they do.
A fee in lieu of taxes is basically saying, "Give us a fee, give us this amount of money and you don't have to pay the tax."
For so many years.
For so many years, that's not forever in a day.
And if they stay there, you, you recoup it back.
So that seems to work, go ahead, Mr. Rice.
Uh, that's, all that, all that is good, but when they sign this contract to come in and get this tax break, then they should sign another, they got to stay X number of years before they can leave. If they're gonna hold you to something, you hold them to something.
That's, that sounds like a good idea.
But it's hard to do with industries, because, you know, they know that they don't specifically have to come here, they can go somewhere else, they always, most of the time, when you meet with them, they have three or four options that they got and we try to narrow it down to get them to come here.
Counties is competing against each other.
That's it.
Yeah, they're competing, I know you said that, uh, John, uh, it, it is very competitive to get a, a, uh, industry to come to Union. It's not just say, "Come on in" and they come, you've got towns all around, let's say somebody, I'm trying to remember, uh, an industry that we were looking at coming here and it looked pretty good, but all of a sudden, they decided to go somewhere else.
Yeah.
And that happens.
It happened a lot.
So you have to put the whole package together and, uh, show people what we have to offer. Then you get into the retail businesses, you get into the schools.
Right.
The school system, of which y'all really have nothing to do with, but you have an interest in it. And, uh, we're sort of excited over the fact that we've got a new superintendent and, uh, looking for great things out of him, we got a telephone call here, you, I don't have enough headphones to go around, I'll just have to tell you what they say, "Good morning to you."
Hi, uh, I just wanted to speak to some of the things you're saying today, um, I know that we're talking about getting industry in here, but one of the things that we have a great problem with is the building, um, I'm not sure I know enough to say, but I have heard a lot of complaints about the building code, uh, codes and the, when somebody's trying to add on or increase or do something, it's almost like they hit a roadblock every time they try to do something, which prolongs, prolongs, prolongs. And this is not being, um, uh, friendly to wanting people to stay here, um, they just run into so much bureaucracy that is red tape and discourages people from, um, doing anything while those that are here, and I think that's why we run a lot of people off, those that we have here have to face that, I know, um, of a personal situation where somebody was trying to, uh, do a building and, uh, downtown and it just took them forever with, uh, codes this and codes that and some of it was just, uh, just ridiculous. I can't recall all of the details, but that's one thing that deters people and makes people wanna leave. We have got to be friendly to businesses to get them to want to be here, to want to stay. And you know, that's an issue across the United States, we do everything to keep small businesses, it's small businesses that really keep a town going too, so, um, we need to look at that.
Okay, thank you for your comments and I'm sure these gentlemen will wanna comment on that. I guess they hung up, I don't know, uh, this is something I've heard, uh, and you know, but we're about to run out of time.
But I think she's talking about the city building codes.
Well, but you've got a building code in the county.
I know, but, but she was saying on Main Street, said she had somebody come on.
Well, that's true, and these buildings are old, admittedly.
Yeah.
But by the same token, um, some of these codes seem to be overbearing to me too.
They are, me and you both, because I tried to buy a building here on Main Street about eight or nine years ago. And, uh, they didn't wanna help me do nothing with it, it's the wiring is messed up, floors, ceiling. And they didn't wanna help me do nothing, the supervisor then and the building inspection, they met with them three times at the same building. And they tried to get me and to put my money in it and I said, "Y'all wanna bring Main Street back and I'm trying to help and y'all don't wanna help me," cause Ms. Jones right down there below the old high school, she owned the building. No, she done passed away now, but anyway, but that was her building and that's the same, the building running, John and right there from where they put the junction, the right above there, that's the building I was looking at.
Ah, okay.
And they told me, you know, said, "Cause it had asbestos in the floors and the walls, wide, tore up the back door about to fall off." And they wanted me to spend my money, and that was when they was doing escapes on Union, you know, putting the, the front, you know, remodel, remodel in the front of the building. And they didn't do nothing to that building and they knew I was interested in buying it. And I think they sold it to the city now, I think for $5,000, but they was asking me back in 2004, they wanted me to put $30,000 in and I was just in the vision.
Gotta come to the conclusion that somehow we've got to become business friendly.
I agree.
I'm gonna have to start wrapping things up here, fellas, I think we could go another half hour or at least on some of the things we're talking about.
I just wanna comment on the caller that I agree with her, that about the building code is too overbearing in here and we need to figure out some kind of way how we can simplify the building code. Uh, and I think some of those codes is all about getting the fee. So we don't need to be putting fees on people just to bring in some revenue and then we end up running off the people and don't get no kind of revenue or no kind of. end up running off the people and don't get no kind of revenue or no kind of business here in Union. So, yeah, the building code need to be simplified.
Good luck with that brick wall.
I didn't say I could do it. I said it need to be simplified.
All right, listen, just, I'm, I'm just about out of time. Just take ten or fifteen seconds to tell people why they should vote for you. Uh, we started earlier. Let's go to John right now for that.
Well, I know these guys are no more Ralph than I do Mr. Rice, but I don't have anything bad to say about either guy. I think both guys are outstanding gentlemen, but I think my being out in the community, being a little league baseball coach in and out of that park at least twice a week, meeting people, talking to people, being a volunteer fireman for twenty-seven years, being out all time tonight, giving my service to the people for free. Uh, you know, way I love to help people and my experience on the town council and collateral just make me a better candidate. I think I'm the better man for the job and I think I have the ability to work with people and that's what we need here in Union on this government, some people who can work together and get some things done.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, I feel that, uh, my years with the federal government and, uh, and the different departments that I worked, uh, would give me an advantage in this particular incident. And, uh, when I moved back here, two thousand and two, I didn't move back here to sit down. If y'all remember Habitat Humanity, when they were building houses, that house behind, I think it's Carrent, no, not Carrent, so the church on, uh, right up street from, uh, funeral, the ex funeral home.
Oh, okay.
Clinton Chapel.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I put that foundation in, down, down, down the hole. I did all that foundation for that, for that particular house for Habitat. And, uh, like I said, I, I came back, I didn't come back to sit down. I came back to work. I want to help people. I want to do what I can for Union County. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Tucker?
Well, I think with my experience being on council and I've learned a lot over the years while I was on council. And I'm gonna try to do the best thing that I can, you know, for Union County if I'm elected again. And I just want to, you know, to help people because I mean, that's what I do. I mean, you know, I just try to help anybody that I can. And I think, you know, that I'd be the asset for the job for reelection.
Very good. I gotta make one comment before we get out of here. Uh, John Glenn brought with him his daughter this morning who has just been a delight and, uh, I, I couldn't have been as quiet as you've been. But, uh, thank you for bringing her in. She actually makes this group look a lot better.
She's, uh, this is Janaya Glenn and she's, uh, her softball team, the Union Pharmaceuticals, uh, Angels, they won the championship.
Oh, right.
So she was on the championship team for the, the girls Angels.
Congratulations to you. So we, we've, uh, we've got some good programs here and we need to expand on those. That's it. Thank you so much, John Glenn, James Rice and Ralph Tucker for being with us this morning as we attempt to keep you better informed. The primary is one week from the day. Please go and vote for the candidates of your choice and, uh, if you don't, you ain't got much to complain about.
Thank you.
That's it. Uh, I gotta say, this is WBCU in Union, South Carolina, and we'll join the news already in progress.